Good evening. Welcome to the June 27, 2016 Troy City Council Meeting. We have the pleasure of having Pastor Bob Cornwall from Central Woodward Christian Church with us to lead us in the invocation. If you would please rise for that and then remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Good evening Pastor.
Greetings Mayor Slater and Council Members. Would you join me in prayer? We gather here this evening to consider the needs and concerns of the community of Troy. I offer up this prayer as one who is both a religious leader in the community and a citizen of the community. On behalf of this community, I pray that you would grant the members of this body whom the citizens of Troy have elected with wisdom and compassion as they consider and pursue the common good of all the residents of this community and beyond. I ask that you would open their hearts and minds so that they might listen to the voices of those who live on the margins of the community, most especially the poor and the voiceless. I pray as well for those who serve this community as first responders and all who serve the community as employees of the city. May they too be blessed. And knowing that this is the season of Ramadan for the Muslim community, many of whom live here in Troy, I pray a special blessing on all who fast and pray and seek the good of all in the community. Their presence in our community is a reminder that we are diverse, diverse in generations, religions, ethnicity, sexual orientation, and gender. We are enriched by this diversity and may this body always keep in mind the richness of our diversity so that we might be a gracious, safe, and welcoming community. In the spirit of the one whom I serve, I pray your blessing on all. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor Bob. Troy City Council Meeting is now called to order. The roll call, Ms. Dixon.
Mayor Slater.
Here.
Councilmember Abraham.
Here.
Councilmember Baker.
Here.
Councilmember Campbell.
Here.
Councilmember Henderson.
Here.
Councilmember Hoderick.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Pennington.
I did receive a call from Mayor Pro Tem Pennington that he was going to be late for this meeting and possibly not make it till the closed session this evening. And he did call me that he would not make our special meeting this afternoon. So I would move that Detroit City Council hereby excuses the absence of Mayor Pro Tem Pennington at the special meeting of June 27, 2016 due to business obligations. Moved by the Chair and supported by Councilman Henderson that we excuse the absence of Mayor Pro Tem Pennington at the special meeting for June 27, 2016 due to business obligations. Discussion. The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Mayor Slater.
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham.
Yes.
Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell.
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick.
Yes.
Motion passes. Our first order of business this evening is certificates of recognition and special presentations. We have five this evening. C1 is a recognition on behalf of the City of Troy Employees Casual for Cause Program for the months of January, February 2016. And Community Affairs Director Cindy Stewart will present a check to Bill Wenzel, Manager of Volunteers and Community Outreach at Focus Hope. Good evening.
Thank you Mayor and City Council. It's my pleasure to let you know that the employees once again did Casual for Cause for January and February, and we raised $675 for Focus Hope. So on behalf of all the employees, I'd like to present that to you.
Thank you so much Cindy and thanks to all who participated. There are a lot of great organizations. We're just grateful that Focus Hope was chosen. And for those of you who do not know what Focus Hope does, we provide food for low-income families and seniors. We provide job training and train people for careers as a way out of poverty. We do neighborhood beautification in the area surrounding our 35-acre campus. We have high school leadership programs and much, much more, a daycare center. But I just want to extend an invitation to the City Council, the Mayor, the City Manager, the residents and business leaders and religious leaders of Troy that everyone will come and see firsthand what we do. I will personally take you on a walking tour of our campus and would love to do that. So once again, on behalf of everyone at Focus Hope, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. We have the honor this evening of presenting a certificate of recognition for James Forer in recognition of his work founding and organizing the Helping Angels Charity Organizations. And if I could ask him to meet me at the podium along with State Representative Martin Horlick. I would be honored to make a presentation.
Thank you for this. This is absolutely incredible. All right.
Can I call you Jim?
Sure.
This is truly an honor for me to be here this evening to recognize this wonderful man. And it's long overdue for all that he's done for our community and all he's done to help the sick and the aged. He's just done an incredible job and I can't think of anybody that deserves recognition and honor than you Jim. So I know there's some others in the audience that you would like to have come up here.
I'd like to have the Advisory Council.
Maybe you could tell us who they are.
Yes. First one is I always say it's Dr. Briate of Cultural Keys, Dr. Buckalow who is Chief Medical Officer for St. John's Providence, and Tina Abate Marzoff who is the CEO for Area Agency on Aging. And this is just part of the Advisory Council that works with Helping Angels Charity.
Thank you and thank you for what you do for our community. But I have a special service commendation and special recognition that I'd like to present this evening to Helping Angels Charity and of course Jim Forer. And I'd like to read this into the record because I think it tells you a story of a wonderful and gentle man. Whereas Helping Angels Charity was founded in 2011 by Troy resident Jim Forer. Annually, this valuable organization provides services to over 1,700 seniors in the greater Oakland County area. Volunteer services include delivering food and supplies to sick, disabled, and homebound seniors supplying food for routine or holiday gatherings, organizing picnics for individuals in low-income senior housing, and placing broken equipment, replacing broken equipment in the homes of senior citizens. And whereas Jim Forer has lived in Troy since 1970 and has always gone above and beyond to help senior citizens, Jim isn't paid to help others. In fact, most often, he uses his own resources to support his community service work, whether it's throwing picnics for individuals living in senior housing, working on the line to produce and then deliver the meals, or standing in court next to a senior citizen who is trying to get help in the legal system. Jim dedicates his time, his compassion, and his resources to helping others. He volunteers up to seven days each week and still makes time for his loving family who is here today. Whereas Jim also partners with many local organizations such as Meals on Wheels, the Salvation Army, Area Agency of Aging, and of course the Troy Police Department. And I know you're very proud of that. Through his many personal and business contacts, Jim's recent mission has been to spread the word about Helping Angels Charity to continue providing a valuable service to many more seniors in need. And whereas the quality of life that the Helping Angels Charity and Jim Forer provide to so many seniors and people in need are key to making Troy, as well as the state of Michigan, the greatest place to live. So now therefore be it known that Detroit City Council takes this opportunity to express its sincere appreciation and recognition to Jim Forer for his distinguished service and his many contributions to the betterment of the city through his volunteer service and of course his passion. And be it further known that by donating his time and talents, Jim Forer has furthered the ideals that contribute to enriching our community. Troy is very fortunate to have organizations like Helping Angels Charity and citizens like Jim Forer who give so much of time and energy to make our community a great place to live, work, play, and raise a family. So this is presented this 27th day of June 2016. It's signed by myself. All members of City Council, Jim and Helping Angels Charity, thank you so much for what you do to our community. Congratulations, well deserved.
Thank you.
My State Representative Martin Horlick would now like to make a presentation on behalf of the state of Michigan.
So Jim, you've been a generous advocate for those who are in need and you've made sure to take care of the members of our community who are in need. And oftentimes, the needs are not readily apparent and sometimes they present themselves to us in unique ways. But Jim, you're the kind of person who makes Troy more than just a city, you make it a community. And same thing for Clausen because I know we spend a lot of time down at the Clausen Manor helping out folks there. And certainly you've been a fixture in my neighborhood for as long as I can remember, you and your family, growing up in southwest Troy there. And oftentimes, we need to be reminded of that call to service. And so you're an inspiration and an example to the community. And so the reason why we give you these awards and presentations is, one, to acknowledge everything that you've done, your tireless efforts, but also to be an inspiration so that you inspire others to follow in your footsteps. And I think there's a lot to be said for that because, you know, people like you are what makes our country great and what makes our city great and what makes Troy Troy. And so we had a discussion in the office and we wanted to make sure that the Governor signed onto this, and he did, and also that clearly I signed onto it. But we also needed a good place because Lansing's about 90 miles from here and it's a bit of a journey to make you drive to get an award. So I appreciate Mayor Slater, you, and the City Council for letting me come up here this evening and presenting Jim with this honorary tribute. And much of what is on here is similar to what the Mayor has said, but I do always like to read at least the last paragraph. "In special tribute therefore, this document is signed and dedicated to join with the people of the state of Michigan in thanking Helping Angels Charity for its steadfast and enthusiastic service to the greater Oakland County area. We sincerely thank Mr. Forer for his service to senior citizens and unyielding passion to serve all those in need. May Mr. Forer's efforts and those of the Helping Angel Charity continue to inspire others in the local community." Signed on by me, the State Representative, and also Rick Snyder in Lansing in June of 2016. So congratulations Jim. And as you can see, my eyesight isn't as good as it used to be. We may give you one with bigger print too.
Thank you Martin. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
He'd like to say a few words about the charity. And I met with Jim earlier this afternoon around 1:30 and he just wanted to make sure that he knew that this wasn't about Jim, this was about the charity. And he's going to tell you that tonight, but I can tell you this, without Jim Forer, this wouldn't happen. So Jim.
Thank you Dean.
Congratulations again.
Thank you Dean. Thank you very much. Martin, thank you again. Good evening folks. On behalf of Helping Angels Charity, I would like to thank the Governor and of course, Representative Horlick and Mayor Slater and Council. And I could not forget the administration, my great wife here who does not want to be We celebrated 50-year anniversary this past Saturday and 56, 50 out of the 56. I couldn't do these things and she doesn't want to take any praise for it, but I couldn't do without a partner and you are an incredible partner. You really are. I also want to be able to reference back, we have lived here since 1970. This undoubtedly is the greatest city in the world. The things that I have learned from being a citizen on patrol with our police department and fire department has been unbelievable. I am so humble and again, this is not me tonight. This is Helping Angels Charity which I have fallen in love with over the 13, going on 13 years. I also, when I say a special thanks, I also give a special thanks to the Advisory Council. The three people standing next to me on my left don't realize the symbols and the understanding they give me. When you're dealing with elderly, elderly death and people that have nothing in this world and you give so much of yourself that you walk away and some days you're so drained. And to have the support of these three people, Tina Abate Marzoff is the CEO of the Area Agency on Aging, which is huge, and that's the one B. She has also been like my mentor in charity giving. And next to her is Dr. Gina Buckalow, Chief Medical Officer for St. John Providence, who has also been a fabulous inspiration. And next to her is, and I always say it because she's a doctor, but Dr. Briate who runs Cultural Keys. She's an anthropologist, a genius. These people are people that give me inspiration. I also would like to acknowledge Tom Rao, CEO at Nix Care, Mr. Bill Golling of Golling Automotive, Barb Mentor Dubinsky, Granite City Restaurant across the street, and numerous other donors. In concluding, people's quality of life improves when they receive some love and caring. I learned this 13 years ago when my wife suggested after retiring as Vice President General Sales Manager WWJ Enjoy and as President of the radio industry. I had a glorious career and Marty said, well, why don't you take one day and do Meals on Wheels? And I did and I fell in love because the little people would come to the door and just the smile and just the love that they would receive made everything to them. And if you haven't walked in those shoes, you just don't know what it's all about. You receive that with a smile and show genuine love and concern and then support them in times of trouble and need, especially when they know that you're there to help. These are just some of the tangible ways that Helping Angel Charity helps to improve the quality of life we serve and especially the adult orphans which we call, who have been left to die. So please continue to your support. Tonight is Helping Angels Charity. It's 17 times two, three of all the people out there. I have to say, we want to take care of the rest of the world, like my mother used to say. I will feed the rest after I feed my family and we need to feed our family first. These people can't stand and go to a door, go to a march or whatever. And there's so many that just tell me, I'm waiting Jimmy for the train of death. And that's so sad. So I don't mean to have all of you crying in a minute, but thank you very, very much from the charity, my wonderful Advisory Council, my city, my government. You're stunning. Thank you. I'll never know.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome sir.
Thank you. Am I done?
Maybe. Hang on a second.
Am I in trouble? Is that what you have, Bob? You're to arrest me?
I have one more proclamation that I'd like to give this evening. And we've done this in the past and we found out this evening that Jim and Marty have been married for 50 years. So I know Marty doesn't want to come up here, but I'm going to ask her to come up here because I have something, I have something for both of you and I can't do this without both of you. I've seen you in pictures, but this is the first time we formally met. It's so nice to meet you.
Thank you very much.
I have another proclamation that I'd like to give this evening. And this is in recognition of Marty and Jim Forer on the occasion of their 50th anniversary. And when you've been married 50 years, there's a lot of stuff that went on in your life, so this has got some stuff in it.
Oh, good grief.
And some of this got investigated today.
Oh dear. You didn't give it.
So let me read this into the record. Whereas Jim and Marty Grine Forer met at Bowling Green University in 1960 while, while working, you look really good for, you look really good for years.
Oh, everybody knows. It's the other guy.
I can't see. While working on their degrees in business and education, Marty was from Middletown, Ohio, and at 14 years of age was ranked 13th in the United States Women's Tennis. Wow. Jim, from Cleveland, Ohio, had a knack for making people happy, you can see that, running a paper route of 75 customers at 5:00 AM, working in gas stations and driving a school bus in college to pay for his education. And whereas Jim and Marty united in marriage on June 25, 1966 in Middletown are now celebrating their 50th wedding anniversary surrounded by family and friends. This marriage has been blessed with two children, Brad and Bethan.
Bethan.
Bethan, who received from their parents the kind of loving and happy life that develops good citizens and wonderful parents. Whereas son Brad and daughter-in-law Sonya reside in Atlanta, Georgia with their daughters Alexis and Isabella. Daughter Bethan and son-in-law Dean Zepoyt.
Piak.
Piak reside in McComb, Michigan with their son, son Adam, and daughter Ashley. Grandkids Adam and Alexis were both born on October 28, 2004. Jim and Marty love their being grandparents and feel they are indeed blessed. And whereas Jim and Marty traveled the country during their career in sales and marketing management and Marty worked as a teacher for many years, in 1970, Jim and Marty moved to Troy and purchased their home in Somerset Estates. And whereas in addition to providing for their family a legacy of wit, wisdom, and love throughout the years, Jim has devoted quality time and energy to local nonprofit organizations such as Meals on Wheels, the Area Agency on Aging, and Helping Angels Charity, which he started in 2011. While Marty switched careers and became a top-notch local Realtor with Berkshire Hathaway, and whereas Jim and Marty are outstanding examples of incredible people providing consistent generous support, creative ideas, dedication, and hard work to the Troy community and beyond, now therefore be it resolved that Jim and Marty Forer are worthy of this expression of our sincere congratulations on this happy occasion of their 50th wedding anniversary. And be it further resolved that Detroit City Council and all of Troy residents extend best wishes to Jim and Marty for many more years of good health and happiness together. Presented this 27th day of June 2016, signed by myself, all members of City Council. Congratulations Jim and Marty. There's not too many people that can make it to 50 years. Congratulations. Good stuff. We should end it right there, eh? Next on the agenda is C3, a certificate of Michigan Municipal Clerk, certificate of award to Cheryl Stewart, who is here with me. And I'd like to present that.
Award?
Cheryl, it seems like you're coming up here quite often lately. Congratulations to you. But Cheryl, on behalf of the City Council and of course the citizens and everyone in Troy, it's my honor to present to you the Michigan Association of Municipal Clerks that hereby confers the designation of Certified Michigan Municipal Clerk, which is a great accomplishment, to Cheryl A. Stewart in recognition of having satisfied the requirements prescribed by the Michigan Association of Municipal Clerks, signed and certified 525, 2016. And it's my pleasure to present this award to you and congratulate you on your success. Congratulations Cheryl.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. (applause) C4 is a proclamation for Immigrant Heritage Month. But before I do that, I'd like to introduce Eleanor Ewen, our Management Assistant, who's going to do a presentation on Immigrant Heritage Month. And here's Eleanor.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Council members. As part of the Global Troy Initiative, the City of Troy has made efforts to recognize the diverse residents of Troy. So for the month of June 2016, the city joined the nationwide celebration of Immigrant Heritage Month and participated in a social media campaign that recognizes America's diversity. The Immigrant Heritage Month celebration is about sharing our very own immigration stories, whether it's something you've experienced firsthand, or whether it's something that you've only heard of through stories of your family history. It really encourages us to stay true to our identity and heritage as a nation of immigrants. So during one of our staff meetings, staff members were asked to write down the cultures and groups that they identify with the most in addition to our American heritage. And as you can see, the results were pretty diverse. And this inspired a novel idea, sharing stories of those who comprise our city government. So first, we started by sharing the story of Kim and Max. They are siblings who both work in the city clerk's office, and as you can see, they have the same beautiful smile. And they shared the story of how their Lithuanian great-great-grandparents escaped war in the Baltic region and came to the United States through Canada. It was really amazing to hear that Kim and Max's family still has the arrival documents, and that their story continues to be passed down from generation to generation. And next, Anisa, who works at the Troy Public Library, shared her own journey to U.S. citizenship. Born in Malaysia, but raised in the United Kingdom and a number of different Asian countries, she has a truly unique global narrative. Eventually, she settled in Michigan three years ago and began the process of becoming a U.S. citizen. So she's six months away from naturalization, and she showed genuine appreciation and love for the United States. And for the third week of June, Councilmember Edna Abraham volunteered to share her family's immigration story. Her parents immigrated to Michigan from the northern region of Iraq in the 1960s. And Councilmember Abraham's candid reflection of growing up as a first-generation American and serving as a bridge between two different cultures really received lots of positive responses from social media community. And then lastly, we'll wrap this month-long celebration of Immigrant Heritage Month by sharing Police Officer John Julian's story. His story will be posted this coming Wednesday, so I won't spoil it too much for you, but Officer Julian's mother, who came to America as a young nurse from the Philippines, she really has a truly amazing story, so stay tuned. I, myself, am an immigrant. My family comes from South Korea. We came to Troy when I was 13 years old. So preparing for this celebration was a very meaningful, very exciting educational experience. It was a great opportunity for not just us, but also for the community to learn about how immigrants have deeply contributed to our society and continue to do so. So we received lots of positive feedback from the community, showing appreciation for sharing their stories. So as Troy City Council proclaims the month of June 2016 as Immigrant Heritage Month, I really hope this can be a new tradition that everyone can join and enjoy together. So thank you.
It's been very exciting for me. I've been working with Eleanor now for the past few months on putting together Global Troy, putting together our committee that I'm going to hope to start getting some nominees for our board. I'm going to try to do two this evening. But Eleanor's been a great partner of mine, and she has such great ideas, we're going to have to find a full-time position for her, Brian. As Eleanor indicated, we are proclaiming Immigrant Heritage Month, June 2016. And I'd like to read into the record the proclamation designated that month in Troy. Whereas generations of immigrants from every corner of the globe have built our country's economy and created the unique character of our nation. And whereas immigrants continue to grow businesses, strengthen our community, and create American jobs in the city of Troy. And whereas immigrants have provided the United States with unique social and cultural influence, fundamentally enriching the extraordinary character of our nation. And whereas immigrants have been tireless leaders, not only in securing their own rights and access to equal opportunity, but also campaigning to create a fairer and more just society for all Americans. And whereas, according to the U.S. Census Bureau, Troy has become a city with the second-largest percentage of foreign-born residents in metro Detroit. The City of Troy is proud of our many immigrants who call this community home and appreciate their valuable contributions in building and enriching our nation. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and City Council of the City of Troy hereby proclaim the month of June 2016 as Immigrant Heritage Month and invite all Troy residents to join the celebration. And be it further resolved that we invite all Troy residents to recognize and celebrate the vital role immigrants have played in our nation's history, as well as their outstanding achievements today and into the future. This proclamation was signed the 27th day of June 2016 by myself, all members of City Council. So it's a great honor to proclaim Immigrant Heritage Month, June 2016, on behalf of the City of Troy. So congratulations and thanks for your hard work, Eleanor. C5 is in addition to the certificates of recognition and special presentations. And I would ask Jed Momat, Projection Manager from North Point Development, Stonecrest of Troy Senior Living, who would like to present a check to the city. And I will turn this over to -- I see Mark Miller is here, and Kurt Bovens.
Yes. Good evening. Good evening, I'm a mayor and council. I wanted to start off and have a little introduction of how we got here. And North Point purchased a property across the river noise next to a vacant park that we had. And they came to us because there was a lot of floodplain on their property, and they needed what's called floodplain volume. So by using a zoning tool, Plan U development, called the PUD, don't ever call it pud, call it PUD, the city can alter our rules and regulations, although we really didn't do that for this, but we also then can achieve or get a certain benefit. And the benefit is they're providing a dog park, and obviously, a check coming up, and Kurt's going to talk about that a little more. But that zoning tool allows us to do that. And in this case, I think it's a win-win situation. We get a use that we need in this community, put it back on the tax rolls, but we also then get a dog park. With that, I'm just going to turn this over to Kurt, who's going to talk a little bit about the components of the dog park.
Thank you, Mark.
Good evening. As Mark was saying, beyond what's being presented tonight, this development has really made the development of the dog park a reality. So typically, all you need is, for a dog park, is just some fencing and some land. But what this is doing is making this a real good example of original dog park in the city of Troy, making it a real high class. With that, Stonecrest is providing the parking lot. They're providing the lights for the parking lot, the detention pond with a fountain, so there'll be a place for the dogs to swim. Utilities up to the future place where a restroom could be, pathway, sidewalk, grading, seeding, landscaping. All this is being done through this PUD agreement, again, in addition to what's being presented tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council members. We just wanted to quickly, on behalf of North Point and Stonecrest, say that we're very excited to be in the community, to be opening up our community soon, and thank you for your continued support and partnership to the project. We're very excited to be here.
Thank you. Do you want to make a presentation? They're making a presentation to the city. And as you can see, to the dog park, they're making a presentation for $50,000 to our dog park. What a great way to kickstart the dog park, and we couldn't think and be more happy to have a partner than we are with you folks. Thank you so much for being our partner. Thank you. There are no postponed items, so we will move to regular business. I1 is board and committee appointments. There are no mayoral appointments this evening or city council appointments. I would like to start doing some nominations for the Global Troy Advisory Committee. So this evening, I am going to nominate Rebecca Chamberlain-Kringa to the Global Troy Advisory Committee for the term that expires 4/30/2017. And Ani Fakori for the term that expires 4/30/2018. Moved by the chair and supported by Councilman Henderson, that we nominate Rebecca Chamberlain-Kringa to the Global Troy Advisory Committee for the term that expires 4/30/2017. And Ani Fakori to the same committee for the term that expires 4/30/2018. Discussion? The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes. Motion passes. And thank you to all of those that have put in their applications. And we are going to be going through those applications and adding, hopefully, two or three in the next meetings until we get that committee full. I would also like to, this evening, nominate John Sharp to the LDFA for the term that expires 6/30/2020. John has been on that committee and has asked to be reappointed. Moved by the chair and supported by Councilwoman Hoderick, that we nominate John Sharp to the LDFA for the term that expires 6/30/2020. Discussion? The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Motion passes. So those are the nominations for mayor position at this time. Mayor Proton Pennington is not here this evening, so we'll wait till next week for his nominations. Next is I3, which is a request for closed session. And if you will find a yellow sheet on the table with a correction for I3, if we could get somebody to move that resolution. Councilwoman Abraham.
I'll move I3, Request for Closed Session, as amended, I should say.
And printed on the yellow sheet. Moved by Councilwoman Abraham, supported by Councilman Henderson, that we shall meet in closed session on June 27, 2016, as indicated on the yellow sheet, Agenda Addendum. Discussion? The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Motion passes. I4 is a bid waiver grounds maintenance equipment for Sylvan Lake and Sanctuary Lake Golf Course with an introduction by Elaine Bow, our Recreation Director. Good evening, Elaine.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I am here tonight to talk about a bid waiver, but I'd like to take a minute out so that Aaron Cano from Sanctuary Lake can brag about how great golf is doing right now.
All right. It's great when the weather's good, isn't it?
It is.
If you could just use the mic, thank you.
On behalf of Billy Casper Golf, I'm pleased to share with the council that this fiscal year has been one of the most successful years in the history of the golf Troy brand. Through new marketing strategies, fun in-house golf events, and a continued focus on customer service, both golf courses have enjoyed hosting more players from the Troy community, as well as neighboring communities. Through May, the 11th month of the 2016 fiscal year, Sylvan Glen has hosted over 40,000 rounds of golf, 4,000 rounds ahead of budget. Of those, nearly 2,000 have been outing rounds, which is 1,400 more than last year. All of these rounds have generated $868,000 in green fee and cart fee revenue, $51,000 ahead of budget, and $123,000 ahead of last year. Golf revenue at Sylvan Glen is up 17% over last fiscal year. Sylvan Glen also hosted its first night golf event on June 10, which saw 76 players tee off using glow-in-the-dark golf balls at 9:15 p.m. Another event is scheduled for July, and they're hoping for over 100 participants. During the same period, Sanctuary Lake has hosted over 36,000 rounds of golf, 8,000 more than budget, and over 10,000 rounds ahead of last year. Of these, over 2,000 have been outing rounds. And so far for the 2016 golf season, we have finalized over $140,000 in closed one outing sales at Sanctuary Lake, more than double last season's outing sales. Total rounds have generated $967,000 in greens fees, $193,000 ahead of budget, and $250,000 ahead of last year. Range revenue currently sits at $83,000, $15,000 ahead of last year. Piper's Pub at Sanctuary Lake has currently brought in $293,000 in food and beverage revenue, over $100,000 ahead of budget, and last year's pace. In addition to growing top-line revenue, food and beverage costs have been reduced by 7%. Sanctuary Lake hosted 144 players for our annual Chili Open on March 19, and 144 players on April 23 for our Spring Scrambler. On August 1, we are proud to be one of 130 golf courses nationwide, hosting the world's largest golf outing, with proceeds benefiting the Fisher's House Foundation. The Fisher's House Foundation builds and maintains free housing for families of injured soldiers who are undergoing long-term rehabilitation in VA hospitals. In-house events continue to be a foundation for revenue growth, and we look forward to our fall event season in a couple months. Through 11 months in the fiscal year, both golf courses have combined to generate $2.4 million in top-line revenue, 380,000, or 19% above budget. The golf courses have netted $478,000, which is 170% of the net operating income budget through May for the 2016 fiscal year. This success shows the tremendous support we receive from both the city and the community, and we are excited to continue to serve the community through providing fun, enjoyable golf experiences to anyone venturing in Detroit to play golf.
Thank you. What great news. Thank you.
How to keep those golf courses looking great, I need a bid waiver for some ground maintenance equipment at both golf courses. It would be a total of eight pieces that we need to purchase. The city is eligible to utilize the state of Michigan and Billy Casper Golf contracted pricing in order to -- pricing in order to replace equipment. This equipment averages 10 to 12 years old. We are turning in six pieces of old equipment for a value of $4,000. We are saving $5,213 by using the Billy Casper price. The total purchase this year for equipment is $135,131. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you would have.
Questions for Elaine? This was a budgeted item. We're just asking for a waiver of the formal bids, correct? Thanks, Elaine. Thank you. Somebody like to move that resolution? Councilman Henderson?
I'll move I-4 as printed.
Support.
Because who doesn't like great-looking golf courses?
Who is the only councilmember here that played on Friday night's golf when it's dark outside?
And I play better than normal, so.
It's not hard to do.[1173.24][1173.24](LAUGHING). Okay. Moved by Councilman Henderson and supported by Councilman Baker, that we approve I-4 as printed in the agenda packet this evening. Discussion? The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. I know the weather's been great, but Billy Casper's doing a great job of being a partner for the city. Thank you for what you do for us. Thank you. I-5 is a contract ratification with American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, better known as ASME, for 2016 to 2021. I see Jeanette Manning, our Human Resources Director, ready this evening with her friends.
Hi, Mayor and Council. I'm pleased to be here this evening to introduce our agreement we've reached with ASME, the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees. This group represents a dedicated group of employees, laborers, that work in the public works and engineering departments. I'm doubly pleased to be joined by Kurt Bovensip, our Public Works Director, and by Mike Heilich, our ASME Chapter Chairman. Let Mike talk next.
Good evening, Mike.
Good evening, Council. We've all went through some trying times in the last few years, but this union has stepped up to the plate and made concessions to help the city weather the economic storm. But now, we've begun to move forward using better methods. And before I go too far, I have two of my favorite members back there, part of our negotiating team, who helped us a lot.
I see.
But this contract was developed by using one of those methods. It's called the interest-based bargaining concept. We use this so that labor and management don't come to the table with confrontations and positions. We center on identifying the issues, and then we explore different ways and solutions to solve them. We don't sit on one side of the table or the other side of the table. We mix ourselves up, so we help each other by identifying those problems and then coming to a solution. We didn't come, the city didn't come there with any proposals or demands or anything. There were some problems, and we solved them. It's based on two things, honesty and integrity. The city came to us with those, and we came to them with them. And it's hard to describe the interest-based bargaining concept. It's huge, it's got all kinds of stuff, but I got an easy solution for you. If you're playing poker, imagine all your cards face up on the table, and that's how we came to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you.
It's hard to follow Mike, but I'll try. You know, this bargaining union has been through some rough times, so has the entire city. And, you know, with Mike coming up here as Chapter Chair, being part of this group, I think it's the first time, and I've been on Mike's side of the table as well when I was a union member, I think this is the first time that I remember that the Chapter Chair is up here, you know, welcoming this contract, which is a real testament to how we're improving the morale of the employees and how the employees at all throughout the city, regardless of levels of employment here at the city, are working together to get the job done and working together to improve morale and being one big team.
Thank you. It's great, great news, great to hear. Thank you.
So it goes without saying, but I'll say it anyway, that both the union and management support and recommend ratifying this agreement.
Thank you.
Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Thank you. City Manager Kishnik?
I have a question for Mr. Heilich. He mentioned that we mixed ourselves up so that we were all throughout working together. Then why did you always sit next to me, Mike? That's what I'd like to know.
Be careful, Mike. Be careful.[1464.21][1464.21](LAUGHING).
There's a lot of ways I could go. And you know, the whole thing, I know you're just, you're okay to get along with.[1477.33][1477.33](LAUGHING). But I never really knew what to expect out of the city manager at any given time, and I think he can say the same thing about me. Negotiations are, even though we used the best method we could, they're still kinda, it's a, it's an odd thing, who's on whose side, and you try to get away from that in this.
Right.
And I think it was probably up to me and Brian, sorry, Mr. Kishnik, to set an example and say, listen, I'm representing the union and you're representing the city, so how we lead is how the others will follow. How, sorry.
Well done. Well done. Well done. Thanks, Mike. We did have a closed session prior to this meeting to discuss this contract, so I think most of the questions were asked and answered at that time. Would somebody like to move this resolution or read it into the record? Councilman Henderson?
I'd like to move I-5 Contract Ratification, American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, ASME, 2016 through 2021.
Support.
As printed?
As printed.
Support.
Moved by Councilman Henderson, seconded by Councilwoman Abraham, that we approve I-5, the contract ratification, as printed in the agenda packet this evening. Discussion? Discussion. Councilwoman Hoderick?
This was just a wonderful thing to witness here tonight. I've watched the city teams for many years, and folks have heard me talk about this group, if you will. I call it the Department of Public Works. Obviously, this team is a key part of that, as being part of our whole safety infrastructure for the city. Police and fire are our obvious heroes that we all talk about. It goes without saying almost. That team is that third leg of the three-legged stool, if you will, and the unsung heroes. One of the things I witnessed them do is when we were in the downturn, they were one of the first groups of people to come forward to talk about concessions to help with the financials and the bottom line. And I just wanted to take a moment and appreciate that leadership then and this leadership now, and know that, yeah, when the snow doesn't always get cleared as quickly as we'd like it to, and there's that big puff of snow piled at the end of our driveways, or, you know, at the end of the day, I think most residents realize and appreciate the work that you all do, and we appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thanks to everyone for the hard work on this contract. Next is the Consent Agenda. Does anyone on council wish to pull a consent agenda item this evening? Councilman Henderson?
I'd like to move all items on the consent agenda as printed.
Sir?
Moved by Councilman Henderson, supported by Councilman Campbell, that we approve all items on the consent agenda as presented in the packet this evening. Discussion? The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Motion passes. If you were here on a consent agenda item this evening, they've all been approved. Next are memorandums and future council agenda items. There are none submitted this evening. I don't see that anyone has signed up for public comment for items not on the agenda from Troy residents and businesses. There are no council referrals this evening, so we will move to council comments. Comments from council this evening? Any council wish to discuss the reports in the agenda packet this evening? I don't see that anyone has signed up for comments on items on or not on the agenda from members of the public outside of Troy this evening. We are going to have a closed session this evening, so we will meet in the boardroom for that closed session. Thank you for coming this evening.